Let us pray. Our gracious and most loving heavenly father, we lift up our hearts and minds unto you. We thank you for the good sleep and good rest with which you have blessed all of us. As we are here in your presence, oh lord, infuse the power of your spirit within us, that we may be able to connect with you and with one another more meaningfully than ever before. Dear lord, we thank you for all the organizers and the committee members who have worked day and night, so that we all will have a beautiful time in this church in your presence. As we are about to begin another session reflecting on the theme, we seek your guidance and wisdom. Bless us, oh lord. Enlighten us, oh lord, and widen our horizons, that we may know you more clearly, that we may follow you more passionately, that we may obey you more diligently. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Thank you. As you can make out from the program sheet, this session is going to be ninety minutes long. That doesn't mean that I'll be doing the talking for the entire session. This is just a disclaimer to make you happy and to make you more relaxed. Just in case you were wondering how we will be able to tolerate this man for ninety minutes. This era is called era of connectivity. You can understand connectivity as digital connectivity, connectivity in terms of bonding, connectivity in terms of relationships and so on. In this era of connectivity, many people are finding more comfort and more or enjoying more privacy than before. I remember one Amachi telling me, "Acha, I love this online worship." Oh, I was quite impressed. And of all the people, one Amachi endorsing the beauty of online worship. So I asked out of my curiosity, "Amachi, why did you say that? Or what made you to say such an observation? To make such an observation?" Then Amachi said, "Acha, you know what? In an online, in an offline worship, the Achans decide everything, when to stand, when to sit up, when to talk, when to sleep. The remote is in fact in their hands. But in online worship, we will decide." In any Amachi's comment by Indira Dushaputu, now the remote is in people's hands, not in the hands of the clergy anymore. But now we are back to square one, again the remote is in our hands. So there are some people who are quite happy with this online worship and the freedom they enjoy. You just turn off the camera and do what you want. You can have the spirit and you can have the spirit of God working together at the same time. So in this era of connectivity, of course, there are many conveniences. But at the same time, the first and the foremost highlight of this digital era, era of connectivity is that the digital gadgets are not seen as a taboo anymore. I remember attending, leading a theological students conference. So I was actually talking on digital shepherding, pastors as digital shepherds. So during my talk, during my lecture, I talked about using smartphones, iPhones or iPad, whatever, or the digital gadgets. And then I said, "There are some senior people who are not happy with youngsters using their mobile to read the Bible and that too from the pulpit or from the podium, from the lectern." And during the question hour session, one student got up and said, "Achan, I have a problem with your statement." I said, "What is the problem?" "How can you endorse youngsters using the mobile or iPad to read the Bible on Sunday from the lectern?" I said, "What is wrong?" Then he said, "Acha, you know, we youngsters use mobile phones for different purpose. From Monday to Saturday, we use our gadgets, our phones for different purposes. And all that we do cannot be mentioned here." You all are doing the same thing. And using the same mobile on Sunday to read the Bible, how can you do that? If you don't want to do it, you should look at this mobile and you are using the same screen to read the Bible. It's a valid question and a valid argument. So I asked him, "All right. You use the same tongue from Sunday, Monday to Saturday to utter all nonsense and on Sunday morning you bring the same tongue to the church to worship God. Do you change your tongue?" This is just a clue what kind of response you will be getting just in case you ask any question. So people have some bad notion about digital gadgets. The Bible existed in different forms. Let us not assume that the Bible existed for the last many centuries in the same form, in the printed form. Bible existed in different forms. It existed as cave wall writing. It existed in the form of manuscripts, papyrus scripts, printing. Now it exists in the form of digital application. So Bible existed in different forms. Let us not think that Bible existed in printed form right from the beginning. So what I'm trying to say is in this era of connectivity, digital gadgets are not considered as a taboo anymore. But my focus is more on, on a different level. In any church, whether it's Singapore or Malaysia or any Marthoma parish for that matter, there are people who enjoy certain privileges. And all those who had the privilege in an offline worship setting were de-privileged. If you go to the established city parishes, there are fixed seats. There is no room for others. Some houses have reserved a seat for some children. They don't move. And some have to sit in front. Some have to sit in front. Some fixed, some seats have become an obsession for many people. And those people are de-privileged in online worship. They cannot insist that I want to sit in front because there is no front and back in online worship. This may not be relevant in your context. Some children have a seat. Whenever they come for meals, they always seat, leave one seat empty. That's, that's for the Messiah. All children have a Messiah. No one has a Messiah in the house. But in online worship, those messiahs are de-privileged. You have no privilege in online worship. Again, in some, see, in any church, people are categorized in terms of the office, the secular office they occupy, the type of branded gadgets they use, the type of cards they have. In online worship, you have no privilege. Because of this, the advantage of online worship is everyone is untouchable. We don't like to hug someone who looks ugly. We don't like to hug Luca. Right? And if someone looks ugly, we would like to hug those people. There are people who are ugly. But in this COVID era, everyone is untouchable, even if you look ugly. So now you know the pain of being untouchable. We live in a society which is suffering from different forms of untouchability, not necessarily casteized untouchability. If you are sick, if you are old, if you are not good looking, if you don't have a fair complexion, you are deemed as untouchable. But in this era of pandemic, everyone is socially untouchable. When we come to the village, we have to put our hands in the air. Some have to put their hands in the air. Some have to put their hands in the pocket. If someone sits, they have to sit in the doctor's room. They don't put their hands in the pocket. Now, if you put your hands in the pocket, you have to pay the doctor. Now, how do you put your hands in the pocket? It's so awkward. Everyone is untouchable. The other issue, the other characteristic of this digital age, this era of connectivity is youth are in action. All these years, youth were in action. Now they are back to action. One child is sitting there, he is standing there. Other children are standing there. When they are standing there, the child is on. When they are standing there, the child is off. Now, it is the youth that who controls the church. Now, you are standing there, I don't know. Now, I don't know. So I think it's, it's God's providence that, that the church is back to its future generation. Now, children are standing there. Now, they are standing there. And some people, now, when they come to the online Zoom, they are standing there. They don't have a hand. They have a hand. They have to stand there. You know, I have attended so many Zoom meetings. In one of the meetings, you know, when you use the mobile phones instead of laptops, there is a problem. If it is on wifi, you get calls. If it is not wifi, obviously the calls are blocked. So most of the online meetings, if you are at home, you will be using your wifi. So you get calls. And after you disconnect the call, you forget to unmute it or you might accidentally touch the screen and it gets unmuted. So you will be making fun of Achan and Uvadesis and the whole world will hear. In one of these Zoom meetings, after my so-called prasangam, one Amachi was asked to say the closing prayer. Amachi closed her eyes, held her hands like this very devotionally, started praying. Now, Amachi has three hands. Now, wherever a person is standing, Achan says, "This child is very clever." And the whole parish heard this. You know, in online media, there is no secret. Everyone is literally exposed and naked. I attended a girl's convention, Soma. Southern. They all live in small rooms, attached rooms. The bathroom is attached. So he left the camera like this, attending the meeting. And he thought, "Maybe it's time to take a shower." He took off all his clothes, went into the bathroom and again looked at the camera to make sure that the camera is on. So I immediately called the person in charge of that prayer meeting. I said, "Somebody is showing some, something, so better you turn off the camera." Online media has a particular, everyone is vulnerable. So the era of connectivity, despite its positive, despite its merits, despite its advantages, everyone is vulnerable and everyone is naked. But at the same time, you cannot avoid this phase of life. It is unavoidable. And also in offline worship, it's not applicable to Singapore, but in many parishes, the space inside the church is gendered. Gendering of space, which means space is allocated according to the gender. If it is a man, it is here. If it is a woman, it is here. Whether it is a man or a woman, when you come to the village, the space is like this. You cannot enter here, you cannot enter there, you can stop everywhere. But in virtual space, there is no gendering. So in one way, virtual space is more a socialist space. Virtual space is more egalitarian and less discriminatory. So you have positives and you have negatives. But this phase is unavoidable. Except for some villages, I remember when I was a seminary student, you know, we will be sent to different parishes for three months, four months, six months. And then you will be attending the prayer meetings, worship service, so you learn many things. I went to another village. When I went to the village, and that Sunday, it happened to be their general body meeting. So I attended the meeting. And in that, while the meeting was going on, one Achan stood up and said, "I want to say something." Achan said something. Then, another Achan said something. He said, "One hour, I will say something." You know what, one hour? He said, "Those who are recently joined, those who are new to this parish, you better shut up." I think that is the one who found out. It is everywhere. Malaysia, Singapore. You are two years ago. I think that is the one who leaked it. Does it make sense? So all these privileges, you are de-privileged. Because in a traditional church setting, you have certain edge over other people. It could be in the name of the seniority in the parish. It could be in the name of gender. It could be in the name of social capital that you carry on. But there are positives and negatives. No matter what you say, this phase is unavoidable. We are irreversibly interconnected. There is no reverse gear. We cannot go back. Now, how do we take up this phase of life? Is there any biblical basis for this? All right. You're familiar with the term normal. Right? Normal, abnormal, new normal, post-normal. You know, after Jesus' death, for the Jewish people, for the Roman soldiers, for the Roman emperors, everything is back to normal. But for the disciples, it's not normal anymore because their lord is no more. So it's not normal anymore. For them, it is a new normal. In the COVID era, we used to call it a walk. Normal, new normal, now people say post-normal. So for the enemies of Jesus, for the people who have crucified Jesus, for them, everything is back to normal. Now things are under their control. They decide and they dictate the terms. And the disciples, they lost hope. They are inside the room, close their doors. They are feared, afraid of the Roman soldiers and the Jewish religious leaders. So you see, for some people, it is back to normal and for some others, it is new normal. It is a new scenario. It is completely a new situation. Now, how does the resurrected Jesus prepare the disciples to face the so-called the new normal scenario? You remember, I said, "For the Roman soldiers and for the Jewish religious leaders, everything is back to normal." Only for a small group of people whom we call the disciples of Jesus, for them, situation is no longer the same. It's new normal. Now, how does Jesus prepare his disciples to embrace the new normal situation? So we will be looking at a few resurrection narratives and see how Jesus prepares his disciples. Let's look at the first resurrection narrative. I'm not going into the details. In John's Gospel, we see Jesus appeared. This word appear is very important. Appearance. Now, we all use the term second coming. But is it biblically correct to use the adjective second? When you say so-and-so is coming. Shiju Achan is coming. How can he come? Because he is already here. So how can Jesus come when he is already with us and within us and in our midst? He has to be elsewhere if he has to come. So on the one hand, we believe that Jesus is in our midst. And on the other hand, we say he will come again. How does these two promises balance? You will have to compromise one promise. Either you say, "He will come again," okay, I believe, or you say, "He is not in our midst." You cannot say both. Therefore, in resurrection appearances, resurrection narratives, the Bible always uses the term appear when he appears again. And what is the beauty of the word appearance? Funny. I'll be showing of my Greek proficiency in between. What do you mean by appearance? Appears, an appearance or appear simply means, simply doesn't mean absence. It means presence. Invisible presence. See, we all know that there is oxygen in the atmosphere, but can you see? Appearance means Jesus is going to become visible again. That's why when he appear, when you read Paul's letters, First Thessalonians, "When he appears again." So in the original language, there is always the term appear, appear, appear. Now, in the resurrection appearances, if you look at the resurrection passages very clearly, "Then he appeared to the disciples." Again, we see, "Then he appeared." So this appearance. Now, in this passage, Mary Magdalene visiting the tomb of Jesus because she wanted to apply some ointments, which is already prepared. When she went to the tomb, when she reached the tomb, she saw the tomb opened. Now, some people are asking, "Mary, whom are you looking for?" But she answered, "What argument?" Mary could make out who is he. Rabuni. She was excited. Did you hear about it? No, 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 it is COVID. You keep a social distance. She was so excited and so much so, she wanted to hug Jesus so tight. Karta said, "Sorry." No, 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 no. No matter what. This is a COVID situation. A new normal. She is not used to this. So what she is used to is whenever she saw Jesus, she always hugged him. So that is her habit. That's how she always expressed her love and affection and intimacy towards Jesus. Now, Karta says, "Don't do it. No more touching." Do you think so? Mary got shocked. Yes, she said, "Jesus replied, 'Do not touch me for, for I haven't ascended to my father. Go to my brothers and tell them I am ascending to my father and your father, to my God and your God.'" The highlight is, "Do not touch me." Don't touch. This is new normal situation. In the normal situation, she could touch, she could hug, she could hold. But in the new normal situation, she cannot touch. Don't touch me. And why you think Jesus stopped Mary from touching him? Why do women have problems in their parish? Right? Why you think Jesus stopped Mary from touching him? Is it because if woman touches him, his resurrected, glorious, transformed body? will it get polluted? Why do you think Jesus stopped Mary? And you know, Mary couldn't take it. This is the problem with us, we are still unable to accept the new norms of the new normal. You know, during Jesus' public ministry, he was always fond of touching people. In Matthew eight, you see Jesus touching a person who is suffering from leprosy. In the Jewish religious tradition, you're not supposed to, you are not supposed to touch a leprous person because you will get impure and you will be kicked out of the tent for one day. And despite the strong religious ritual regulations, Jesus extended his hands and touched the leprosy person. Because he was so fond of touching. And Jesus even touched the coffin of Jairus' daughter. And same with Widow's son at nine. And when he saw the kids, he made them sit on his lap. So Jesus always touched. But now he says you cannot. In Luke seven, we read a sinful woman, you know, the story of Jesus dining at Simon's house. So he was enjoying the meal, then suddenly there appeared a woman carrying a jar which contains expensive ointment perfume. She broke the jar and put, started applying the ointment on Jesus' body. You know, this she is doing in public, not in secret. And Jesus was enjoying. And if you read Luke, it says she kept on kissing him. Who? Sinful woman. And the disciples started grumbling and murmuring, saying, if she knew who this woman is, she wouldn't have allowed. So he was always fond of people's touch. You remember the story of Canaanite woman, a bleeding woman, Seraphinean woman? If you happen to be in contact, it's quarantined, now we are impurity, it's quarantined. Hotel quarantine is not there. So if you happen to be in contact with a bleeding woman, you will be under quarantine for seven days because you are ritually impure. And this woman touched Jesus in secret. Then what did Jesus do? He asked, who touched me? Do you think we should think about it? Have you been to Bombay? In Bombay, the railway station is very important. We don't do anything, we just sit down, everyone is watching us. I think it's very good to go on a local train in Bombay. A very good man. We don't do anything. Now, wherever we are sitting, we can sit down in the basement, we can sit down. They will watch us. Such a nice people, right? So loving, so understanding. They understand that we are sitting in the basement. Right? In the midst of the crowd, Jesus is asking, who touched me? What a question is this? So many people and you are asking, who touched me? No, 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 someone deliberately touched me. It's not a coincidental, accidental touch, it is deliberate. And rust is the story, you know? Then we know that she is a bleeding woman, blah, 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 blah. Jesus could have kept it secret and she also wanted it to be a secret. But Jesus exposed that secret touch. So all these stories mean that Jesus was always fond of touch. He never stopped anyone from touching him, nor was he reluctant ever in touching people. But the same Jesus is now stopping Mary Magdalene. Because this is a new normal situation. So what we used to do in quote-unquote the normal situation, the normal scenario, you cannot practice it anymore. Isn't it COVID? We have done everything, and we can't do anything. So Jesus is preparing Mary Magdalene for a new normal situation. Where touch is next to impossible. Where touch is no longer an expression of love. Where touch is no longer regarded as a sign of intimacy. So now it's all about not touching, but not touching. If you sincerely love a person, instead of getting close to him physically, you keep a distance. So distancing has become a sign of love in the new normal scenario. Instead of proximity, distancing has become the new normal, the new norm. In the normal scenario, if you love a person, you touch him. Do you know, when COVID happened, you were very angry. When you went to Jolly Q, we were all scared. Now, what do you say? Do you think? I'm going to sleep. If you don't sleep, what is it? Because, not like that, Jolly Q always comes to scare us. Now, not touching them is the sign of true love. So instead of proximity, distancing has become sign of love. So instead of touching, now it's not touching. So in the new normal scenario, in the new normal situation, the normals have been reversed. So a reversal of new gestures, a reversal of conventional gestures. Because, we have done something with our friendship, we can't practice it now. When a grandpa came to your house, he had a complaint. Now, a grandpa is coming. When a grandma is at home, she is sitting there. We are there. Now, uncle is coming. Don't touch, pray. Understand? When a grandpa came, it was friendship. Now, it's not. When a grandpa doesn't come, it's not friendship. So you are talking about friendship, you are talking about friendship. So resurrection is a new normal scenario. The historical Christ, Mary Magdalene, and you know the Gospels. We have seen everything. The disciples, the children, the sinful people, the tax collectors, sex workers, they always enjoyed the proximity of Jesus. If you want to touch him, you can touch, he will not stop. That is the normal scenario. But we have come to a new normal scenario where you cannot practice what you used to do in a normal situation. Because, we are saying to Mary, do not touch me. There are some texts, if I say that, we will be clearer. The next resurrection story. Then Jesus told him, you believe because you have seen me. Blessed are those who believe without seeing me. So the, Jesus who stopped Mary from touching him is now inviting Thomas, you come and touch my wounds. Did Thomas touch? Did Thomas touch? We are all Thomas. We are all the same. Then, if Thomas or Matthew are there, when they come, we are all the same. Who is Thomas? That Thomas is not good, I said. Now, Thomas says, you come and touch me, but he didn't. He said, my lord and my god. A historical classic statement of confession of faith. He didn't touch. And then Jesus said, you believed because you have seen me. And then Jesus said, but blessed are those who believe without seeing me. This is a new blessedness in new normal situation. So in the normal scenario, blessedness means you are able to touch, to see and experience the historical Christ. But in the new normal situation, blessedness is understood differently. Which means we are more blessed than the apostles. And sometimes we think the apostles are more blessed and more privileged than us because they could see, they could touch, they could hold, they could hug Jesus. But yes, you are saying, no. You believed because you have seen, but blessed are those who believe yet have not seen me. So in that respect, we are more blessed than the apostles. We think it's complex, right? Apostles are a part of them, they could see. Yes, you don't have to worry. Who are the blessed? Those who believe without even seeing me. So you are all blessed people, Makarios. Who is Makarios? Makarios, you are all blessed people. Do you think? Apostles are not good, right? Right? You are in no way lesser than the apostles. So new normal means new blessedness. So Jesus is preparing his disciples for a new normal situation. Let's move on to the next text. The Amos story. And we know the story, I don't need to narrate it. They were going back to Amos. And as they were going, a stranger joined their conversation. And finally, they were, they have almost reached their village. And this stranger was about to leave, he pretended that he is leaving. Then these two disciples said, you stay with us, have roti paratha and matangari, and then you leave. He stayed with them. And at night, as they were having dinner, this stranger took the bread. He broke it and their eyes were opened. In the new normal scenario, it is in participating the sacraments. It is in reading and understanding and interpreting the word of God that your eyes get opened. So in the normal scenario, you are connected to Jesus in traditional conventional ways. But in the post-resurrection, new normal, post-normal situations, your connection with Jesus is not physical, but sacramental. So why sacraments, why worship, why reading the scripture is so important? Because new normal situation demands new mode of experiencing Christ. The key words for the camera, Matthew eighteen twenty, even two or three are met in your name, in my name. There will be off a tree. If you say two or three, where is it? Where is it? What else? Not like that. Jesus sees with the disciples physically. But in the new normal situation, this is more of a virtual presence in the sense, wherever people meet, whenever people meet, no matter in which time zone you live, in which time zone you worship, irrespective of the geographical, chronological differences, I am there in your midst. So new presence, new normal. So Jesus is preparing his disciples from a normal experience to a new way of experiencing Christ. So new normal demands new modes of being in relationship with Christ. I think it's very true in our daily life. When you are, your, children, in America or England, they will have kids, grandchildren. When they come, the parents have to introduce, you know, this is called the appachan? Appachan, okay, right, okay. Yes, this is called the ammachiyan appachan and you have to show him the adhar card, other cards, everything. This is the appachan whom I always talk about. Now? I see it on WhatsApp. New way of experiencing the love, new mode of being in relationship. Now, in this context, see when you left Singapore, when you left Kerala, you came to Kerala, not New York. You came to Kerala. When you were with your parents, how did you communicate? A letter, my grandpa is not a good person. People say, I'm going to the country. Do you have a pet? Do you have a pet? I don't know. People say, go to the country. I went to Punjab. I'm sitting here. My name is Moti, it's a great reason, I'm from Punjab. My grandpa, Motilal Nehru, Motilal War, people have seen him. Because, he is a good person. But I can't say that. Understand? He is like this, he is Moti. My grandpa was like that. So, my grandpa went to Rajasthan, Punjab, then Kargil. People say, I'm going to my house. We know, we are going to Kargil. When we go there, how many days will it take? Train? Right? After the train, someone will come. If you have youth, if you have a baby, if you have a child, if you have a child, we don't know. Now? When Pakistan people talk, they are ready, they are going to watch. So you get, you get instant messages. Now, we are, I'm bodying, I'm carrying. I was in the same time, I was in the airship, I was on a journey. That's why I message, whether it's raining or not. I didn't say, go, go, go. Go, go, go. That's why I said. Now, we are no longer in relationship with one another in the conventional ways. If it works in our daily life, why not in our spiritual experience? If it works in our daily life, why not in our spiritual experiences? So sacraments, worship, when two or three are met in my name, I am there in their midst. This is called the new normal. When he broke the bread, their eyes were opened. So, when the celebrant breaks the bread, there is a small gap in between the broken crumbs of bread. And through that gap, you see the risen Christ. So sacrament, holy krumana, is a new way of being in relationship with Christ. And again, in the story, the disciples say, "You remember when he spoke to us, when he interpreted the words wherein our hearts burning inside?" So, in the interpretation of the Word of God, you experience God's presence. So, what I am trying to say is new way of connectivity. Through sacraments, you are connected to Christ. Through scripture, you are connected to Christ. When you meet in His name, you are connected to Him. So, new modes of connectivity, new mode of being in relationship with, that's what the new normal demands. Matthew thirteen one to nine, the story of the seed and the sower. The importance of getting connected, the importance of properly getting connected. Four contexts. Same seed. A sower, a farmer, went to his paddy field, went to his farm. So, he was carrying some seeds. He started throwing seeds. Some fell on the road, some on the rock, and some among the thorns, and some in good soil. Same seed for different contexts. And only one context produced a good harvest. And what is the difference? The seed is of the same quality. The difference is the context. The first group of seeds fell on the wayside, on the road, started growing. The birds took them away. On the rock, it also germinated, but it couldn't stand the scorching heat, sun heat. Third one, among the thorns, that also started growing, but the thorns destroyed them. Now, here the question is, here the issue is, who survives, the fittest or the friendliest? The COVID nineteen pandemic has clearly shown to us that there is no such thing called the survival of the fittest anymore. All of us are equally vulnerable. I'll show you the name of a book. All right. See, some animals, they survive through centuries, some don't. They are taking the example of dogs. Why dogs survive? You know, you have dinosaurus, mammoth, animals, but they all perished or they are almost about to extinguish, but dogs survive. So, if you look at the history of animals, animal kingdom, the huge, strong animals extinguished, vanished from the surface of the earth. But a particular species of animal, dog, they are not fittest, but they are the friendliest. If humanity has to survive, we need to be friendly and neighborly. So, the post-normal, the new normal scenario demands friendliness and neighborliness. So connectivity, the word connectivity can be substituted with friendliness and neighborliness. The four types of seeds. The seed that fell on the wayside, no deep root. It's just like some families. It looks very green. It looks very happy, but no roots, not deep, not deeply connected. Just like the seed that fell on the rock. We start, we begin, but we perish. See, those who have done PhD or PhD students, they always get carried away by fancy fascinating topics. We want to do something which nobody has ever done. So, my professor said, "It's not the width, but the depth that is more important." So similarly, it doesn't matter how you look in public, are you deep rooted, deeply connected? Whether it is to Christ or to one another or to your own life partners. These three types of seeds perish. Not that they are not connected, they were connected, but not deep enough to produce fruit. But only one type of seed, they were friendly and neighborly with the soil. And Jesus said, "If you live in Me and I in you, you will produce much fruit." Let me close. It's all about connectivity. How we reimagine connectivity in this new normal, post-normal situation? We have seen how Jesus prepared His disciples to be connected to Him in new ways. The disciples and Mary, they were more comfortable in traditional conventional ways of connectivity. But Jesus is inviting them to experience Him and to be connected with Him in new ways, new modes of being in relationship. And only that type of connectivity in our family can produce or to make our family a blessed one. And all of them are in states. You can imagine the plight of this appachan and amachi, totally abandoned. You know, these children are so loving and so understanding. So, the six brothers and their wives, they got together and they decided, see, we are twelve and there are twelve months in an year. So, we will plan our leave in such a way that one of us will always be with this appachan and amachi. They should be looked after like king and queen. But we are far away, but they got together and reimagined. So, reimagining, re-imagination is important in any form of relationships, whether it's a family relationship, whether it's a church life, anywhere, this new imagination is possible. But new normal situation demands new patterns of relationships. You cannot stick on to the old conventional stereotype patterns. That won't work anymore because situations are no longer the same. We are no more in the normal situation. We are in a new normal, post-normal situation. So, let us prepare ourselves to venture, to reimagine new patterns which would make our family life, our church life more blessed. And we will discover the possibilities of how we can reimagine new patterns of being in relationship with Christ and with one another.